Well, hello and welcome. Good evening. My name is Aiden Graham. I am editor in chief of Brooklyn Paper. And this is my colleague Jada. We are hosting the SNEPS Media Council Debate for the upcoming Democratic primary in Council District forty-three. I believe we're starting with a quick introduction from the candidates. They go clockwise as I see you on my screen. So Stanley, if you want to hop in there first.
Okay, start now.
Um, this data, you want to go through the?
Uh, before we get into introductions, let's go ahead and give, read the, go through the rules of how this form will work and then I'll, you know, let everyone start with their opening statements. So for tonight's debate, um, we'll have two rounds of questions. The first round will be questions that we've prepared. Um, and then the second round viewers will have a chance to put Q and A questions in the Q and A forum. Um, so viewers, if you have a question, go ahead and type those in at the same time. And you just click the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen and then Aiden and I will screen the questions as we receive them. If we deem them appropriate, we'll ask the candidates. Um, so now we'll go ahead and start with the opening statements and each person will have two minutes and I will be keeping time. So let me get that, go ahead and set up.
Thank you so much, Data.
And Ashley, Wei, you will go ahead and start with your opening statement.
Oh, sure. Okay, let me know when can I start?
Yes, you may start.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Jaden, Aiden, and Snap Medias for having me tonight. My name is Wei Chan. I'm running because I believe every New Yorker deserves to live in a safe community with great schools and our seniors are protected. I was born and raised in Hong Kong and came here with one suitcase to pursue my American dream. When I was a student at Columbia University, I saw immigrant community was struggling with language barrier and couldn't get any city resources. I decided to help and started teaching ESL to working families at a community center. Eventually, teaching thousands. After graduating, I joined CPC, the nation's largest Asian-American social service organization, to make sure that our community has access to the resources they need. In twenty eighteen, I joined Councilman Justin Brennan's office as the Director of Community Engagement, where I helped thousands of our neighbors with anything they need. During the pandemic, I saw seniors being left out because of lack of technology and social services support. I knew I had to do something, so I joined Home Press Community Services as the executive director to ensure our seniors have the resources they deserve. So all this year, I put all my effort into serving and helping the community from children, youth, seniors, immigrant families, and special needs families. When there's not enough after-school programs, I step up, I establish five. When our youth need opportunity to empower themselves, I put up Youth Leadership Program. When funding for our seniors was at risk, I fought it back. When the community has crisis, incident, and tragedies, I'm the one who gets the call to help. So as your city councilperson, I'll fight for safety, seniors, and schools. And I will bring home the resources that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for that opening statement. And now we'll be following alphabetical order. So Stanley, you will be next with your opening statement. I'm ready whenever you are.
Hi. My name is Stanley Eng, and I am running to be your City Council Member here in District forty-three. I am not a career politician, and I have never worked for any politician. I am running as an outsider to bring my unique perspective to City Hall. Born and raised in New York City, I have lived in Dyker Heights and Besenhurst area since nineteen eighty-nine. I am a product of the New York City K-12 Public School System. I attended Brooklyn Tech High School. I graduated from both a Bachelors and a Masters in Computers. This is the degree that Congressman George Santos does not have. I worked as a computer programmer for more than thirty years and am now recently retired. I have lived in the South Brooklyn community for thirty-plus years. I have seen a change, and it has not changed for the better. I am running to be your City Council Member to represent the concern of the resident who currently are voiceless in the system. Our campaign, my campaign, is running on three main issues. Public safety, educational excellence, and everyday affordability. To start, for ten years, I was elected under local school board on this District twenty C E C and the City Board Council for High School. I know and understand education. Second, during the pandemic, I volunteered and operated food banks and food pantry all over New York City. Third, I am currently volunteering with an Asian Control Watch Group in Sheepshead Bay to help keep the community safe. My experience on these issues make me the best candidate running. I am not beholden to the politician or the political machine. I serve the community. I promise that everybody currently in the community who's not here will have a seat at my table.
Okay, that would be time for your opening statement. Thank you so much. And now we'll give the mic to Susan. Susan, you will have two minutes for your opening statement.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here with us tonight. My name is Susan Wong. I'm running for City Council. I'm a first-generation immigrant and a working mother of two young children who go to public school in our neighborhood. After I graduated from SUNY, I moved to Brooklyn to live and work here. I always love to help people and serve our communities. As Chief of Staff for Assemblyman Assemblyman William Colton, our office helps around five thousand family every year. I see from firsthand, I understand the needs of people in our neighborhoods. I have worked tirelessly on many important issues that we all face. From fighting for public safety, more funding for education, affordable housing, protecting small businesses and services, especially for underrepresented families. I'm happy to be here asking for your vote, so I can go to City Hall to fight for the people in our community. I will work to make our streets safer and cleaner, fight against all the hate, and help our seniors, so we will all have a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements. So now we're going to move to the first round of questions. Again, these are questions that we have prepared. Um, each candidate will have two minutes for their answer, and their opponents will each have one minute to provide a rebuttal. And as we said earlier, you can, you know, choose to decline that rebuttal. Um, again, I'll be keeping track of the candidate's time while Aiden will be asking the questions. Candidates will be alerted when their time is ended, and we will meet you, um, as we experience if you do not wrap up your questions, or excuse me, wrap up your responses. So for the first round of questions, we're going to maintain that alphabetical order, but that order will shift um, with each question for question number one, Wei, you will go first, then Stanley and then Susan. Question two, Stanley, Susan, Wei, and continue in that order. And I'll pass it along to Aiden.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Jada, and thank you all for your statements. Um, I want to begin by talking about the district you are all running for. Um, it will be the first majority Asian district in Brooklyn, um, which is very rare, of course. In recent years, there has been a spate of anti-Asian attacks and hate crimes. As council member, what will you do to combat anti-Asian hate crimes and protect your constituents? Um, and Wei, we will start with you.
Thank you. When I'm not on doors every day and hear the concern from residents about safety, about anti-Asian hate, our community is facing unprecedented challenges and increased hate-based violence. No one should live in fears. Part of the American dream is feeling safe and being safe. If elected, I plan to invest more funding to combat hate crime and ensure that translator on staff to assist with filing reports. I also support NYPD and increase our uniform headcounts. Expand more mental health services and diversion programs. And of course, add additional firefighter for every engine so that we can battle for more effectively. So we have to invest everything more, but not less. For example, mental health program, anti-Asian hate resources, put more translator in places. Thank you.
I can start?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Anti-Asian hate. I spent most of this year on a neighborhood watch group in Sheepshead Bay. We've been starting off with the funding from the local council member there. I went there to learn. We've been trained by Shoma, the Jewish group. And the thing is that I watched and I learned. The one thing I'm going to do whenever I come back to our community is to make sure that our police are fully funded. Make sure that we have the money properly in place for mental health. And make sure programs such as SYAP are fully funded also, because if we don't have those fundings in place, kids have no place to go, and they will start causing problems. Okay? So the thing is that it's not just an issue of just having more money for the police, but public safety has to be fully funded also. Thank you.
Great. Um, and Susan, we will turn it over to you.
Sure. Uh, I definitely will make sure the police will be fully funded and also will work with community groups who has the resource for the local people speak their language, able to help them to report the hate crime if happened. And also, I personally work with a lot of seniors. Um, that hate crime happens in South Park, which next to our office. Um, we called the police, make sure the police came to the side and make sure those hate crimes stopped right away. And also, um, for me, as all my opponents already said, that they will work with NYPD, work with, um, different groups. Of course, that's needed. And also, we want to make sure we work with all the groups. When the hate happening Asian community, it's happening every single community. Last year, I could, I organized the rally against the Jewish hate crime. And also, I believe all the Muslim group, um, Italian group, Russian group, and also all the races, uh, we need to work together, fight against the same issue we are facing right now. The hate against Asian, that's, it's hate. It's hate against Jewish, hate against Muslim, hate against any religion or anyone. It's wrong. We need to stop that. We have to make sure the law do not tolerate those hate crimes. We have to be hard on those crimes.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I got a little off track there. Um, I already broke one of my own rules, but, um, after each candidate speaks, we will, uh, offer you guys, uh, one minute to respond directly to what that previous candidate just said. Um, for this round, I will offer it right now. Um, would anyone like to respond to your fellow candidates? Um, you will have one minute to do so if you choose. Okay.
The one thing I just want to say based on Susan, um, discussion is that the way we see it, and when I learned it from the Shoma group, and that was an attack on one group, it's an attack on all groups. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Um, okay. Sounds good. Um, I want to turn to the demographics of the district, touching on that. Um, many of your constituents have felt that there is a sense of displacement and gentrification. Home prices are rising, uh, and it's getting harder and harder to afford to live there. Um, as council member, you will have enormous sway over real estate developments in the neighborhood. Um, you will effectively have a veto over certain, certain projects in your, in your district. Um, so when it comes to real estate developments and, and new housing, um, how do you view the balance between market rate housing? Would you allow that? Or would you condition it only with a certain amount of affordable housing included? So I believe Stanley, you are beginning this one.
Okay, thank you. I live in the district for more than thirty years. I know the top part, the north part, Sunset Park, all the way down into Dyker, through Besenhurst, Gravesend, Bass Beach. I know this area. I've been here. I've seen a change. The biggest issue is that in this area, we, we have many, many single, double, and maybe triple family houses the most. The apartment buildings are only in certain areas. And the thing is that every time they try to overfill in those areas, people protest because either not enough sun, not enough schools, or not enough utilities to, to service, becoming an issue. My thing was, I, I'm, I'm under record, like, in case-by-case basis, we should look at maybe legalizing basement apartments in certain areas, but things like overbuilding like nine, ten stories in a three-story area, people are having problems with that. There may be one or two large buildings coming online, but every time we try to add more housing, people are protesting. One thing I've been talking about, we need more Section Eight in this area in order to keep the affordability. I've been around the whole district and the senior are complaining because they cannot afford to stay here. Property taxes are up, rent is up. So everybody is getting hurt, everybody is getting squeezed. In terms of affordability, I spent more than two years on the food pantry, and I know exactly what it means to, you know, to either have food on the table or pay the rent. And people here are getting squeezed all over the place. So it's really difficult to come up with any answer when it comes to affordability and more housing. Thank you.
Great. Um, now we will move on, but first, uh, as I said, and, um, the other two candidates can choose to respond to Stanley's answer there, uh, if you so choose. If not, uh, we will continue our rotation. Um, okay.
So this is, sorry, I, so I can rebuttal that or is that correct? One minute, right?
Yeah, we will give you a minute if you want to respond directly to, uh, what, um, one of the other candidates said. Uh, and you will save your time to, uh, speak your own answer.
Okay, um, Wei Chan, you got a, um, big, what's a real estate developer, um, pack behind you. So if they want to build building here in our district, what are you going to do? And the high-rise building, and then the people in the community don't agree. You going to fight against them to the real estate developer, or you going to protect the people here? You will say you will protect people here. How do you protect people in the community?
So I think you're misunderstanding. I haven't made my statement though, right?
Um, no, you, you will be given your time. Um, although that was a direct question, so if you would like to take a moment just to respond directly.
So I can re, I can respond, right?
Sure. Or if you'd like to respond during your own statement, um, whatever you prefer.
Okay, sure. I mean, this is a force desperate attack, you know, from my opponent. I have funny against the opening and shelters when you're talking about, uh, this group. I have no idea. They operate without coordinating me and my campaign. I'm in front against the opening of, you know, where you're talking about shelters in an acceptable location in our community for years. I want to focus on how we can improve our community with long-term common sense affordable housing solutions rather than temporary shelters. Thank you.
Um, okay. There is a nice back and forth, but we will get back to, um, your original answers to the original question, uh, moving on to Susan. Um, so Susan, if you would like to take your two minutes, um, to speak about the issue of development and affordable housing.
Uh, wait, that, this is affordable housing issue. It's not only our district issue, it's a whole New York City issue. Um, we, I have been seeing data, um, saying nature, nature system has more than ten thousand apartments are vacant. We need to make sure we fix this apartment, people able to move in and build, and also make sure those apartments be occupied first. And also, when we build a house in our district, make sure there are certain percentage housing are affordable. And it's not just saying affordable, five thousand dollar a month in our district. That's not called affordable. Really, we need affordable housing in the neighborhood. And also, the government should have some program to those people cannot afford for live in the district and also not able to afford to live in their current house, they should have the program to help them. And also, um, for the high-rise developing our district, people want to build in our district. We have to ask our people first. If our, our people agree, or is that the best for the people in our neighborhood? Is that a smart design? We definitely need to look at all the aspects for this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Um, now, if the other two candidates would like to directly respond, uh, to that answer, you would have a minute to do so. Uh, if not, we will move on.
I'm good.
Um, okay, so Wei, um, you're up.
So we need to increase our housing stock to bring down the prices. There's not enough affordable housing stock in New York City. Our City Council needs to do more. Knocking on doors, I come across like two bedrooms apartment with four families living in them. We need to speak up the pre-certification process, make it more transparent and exempt small housing projects from environmental assessment statement to get shuffle in the ground for new housing faster. We also need to legalize basement garage apartments, bringing them into New York for safety, compliance, and inspection standards. It is a win-win for landlord and tenants. We also should like convert unused office building into affordable housing. And for existing homeowner, we need to reform our broken property tax system. Last but not least, we have to provide incentive to weaken landowner to build more affordable housing. Thank you.
Great. There was a lot there. Um, Stanley and Susan, if you would like to respond to that, you are more than welcome. If not, we will move on.
Um, I just want to say, I lived in Dyker for more than twenty-six years. Um, I own a two-family, and I have had neighbors on the block that have had illegal basement. And the thing is, that's not good. Biggest problem is that the schools are impacted because anytime they put families in basement, it could be anywhere from one, two, to five kids. And there's no place to put the kids sometime, and this is why some of our schools are overcrowded. So we, like I said, I'm for basement apartment to be legalized, but it has to be done on a case-by-case basis. So we should be careful in our district. Thank you.
Um, well, Stanley, you touched on schools, and I, I want to move over to that. Um, so I, I want to leave this a little open-ended to get your thoughts on whatever, uh, you would like to have your constituents know. Um, but given that the DOE has limited budget, um, everybody wants more funding, of course, but, uh, can't have everything. Uh, what would you tell your constituents that you are uniquely situated to do? What would you tackle in terms of schools in your district and, and in the city at large? How would you approach education? Um, and you can interpret that however you'd like, and figure where you go. Um, Susan?
Um, in the past, uh, past year, the City Council have been, the city, let's put this way, the city has been cutting the school budget. Uh, I create the petition online, and also I did the petition in front of the schools last year, ask the parents to sign our petition, make sure we have enough, um, budget for all our schools. Cutting the budget to our schools, cutting the budget to, for education, it's wrong. Um, we want to make sure our children have enough money to go to schools. And also, we have to make sure we fully fund our programs in our schools, like say after-school program, summer program, and also we need to make sure we have special gifted talent program be, uh, be spent. Spending those programs and also, uh, in our district, District twenty and the District twenty-one, we don't have enough seats in our for our kids. Now the city want to cut the budget. You think that's right? Um, I could, I will, if I get elected, I will definitely work with other council member to assure we have enough funding for our schools. And the definite, literally not cut our program such gift in the talent program or kids with special needs program, we definitely need more funding and spend this, those programs.
Uh, great. Um, so again, uh, you, Stanley, you look great.
And I, and I'll be, but, yeah, okay, I just make it real quick. I've talked to the local CECs recently and down in Sunset Park in that area because of the pandemic, there's a drop in enrollment in that area. And because of the pandemic, it seems like some of the families been moving out. So the overcrowding that we saw before the pandemic, it's very different today after the pandemic. So we just have to be careful with talking about overcrowding because it's really could be done on a case-by-case basis. Okay, I saw one of the thing. Thank you.
Um, great. Um, so now, Wei, I believe you were up, um, for your answer to the question.
Sure. Investing in education is the great equalizer and will be one of my main priority in New York City Council. I wanted to make sure our public school is fully funded. When I was in Councilman Justin Brennan's office, I helped to build five schools in Southend, Brooklyn. That's why we have to fully fund the school so we can retain quality teachers, enhance infrastructures, and expand extracurricular activities. I want to advocate for more funding in after-school programs, home packs program, and the summarizing programs so that children still engage academically and recreationally during after-school and summer hours. Thank you.
Can I be, but, uh, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so when you talk about the five schools that you, that were set up during the pandemic, okay, would you like to say anything about the school that took over the Nathan's site where people got a, um, commission to, to get that site for the SCA? I mean, if you're going to take credit for it, you should also take the responsibility when someone gets a commission for bringing up that site. You do know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, the Nathan's site, right, that you're referring to? Mm-hmm. And you know that Stanley, it's so hard to find you in a location to build school in Southend, Brooklyn. When there's opportunity to build more school and less overcrowded, we're going to go for it.
So even if somebody got a, got a, uh, got a credit or got a, uh, commission for it, it's okay with you?
What mission? Sorry?
A commission. Someone got a commission for finding that site. It was a scandal in the paper.
No such thing. There's no such thing. Where did you find that? So what's the commission for?
The, uh, maybe Paul will look it up. Thank you.
Um, well, lively discussion. Um, I'm sure people can find our reporting on that on BrooklynPaper.com, um, as well as other places. Um, continuing this, uh, Stanley, you are actually up now.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Thank you. Education, my life, ten years on the District twenty C E C and City Board Council for High School. I can talk about education for hours. The one thing I'm going to talk about is the schools in my district. For a long time before the pandemic, we were severely overcrowded. And the reason why we overcrowded was because we were one of the best school districts in all of Brooklyn. And to give you an idea, some of our schools were anywhere between a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty percent overcrowded. I know that because that was my entire life on the C E C for those ten years. Now, what did we do about it? We have severe overcrowding everywhere, not just in District twenty, but twenty-one also. And it also hits us at the high school level. What has happened was because it hit us at the local high school level, the kids in my district are forced to more or less go to high schools outside the district. And what they do is that the best way of doing it, they do it through the specialized high schools to take the S H S A T. And enough in my district alone before the pandemic, more than five hundred kids in District twenty made it into the specialized high school. We need problems like this throughout the city. And the, the thing is that there are many school districts who do not send any kids to the specialized high school. I will work to help the other school district and other council members. I will work to help the other school district and other council members to affect a program and affect the model where their kids can have the same opportunity we have in District Twenty. At the same time, we also need to build a school like a Nest ASD, which, which is a school for autistic kids. We need schools for these type of development kids in the system. They've been forced to bust out the system, so we need to find ways to help them also. So I really hope of the five schools, one of them is could be converted for kids with autism. Thank you.
Uh, great. Wei and Susan, you are free to respond to Stanley. If not, we will, uh, move on.
I don't have.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I did want to touch on transportation, obviously, everyone. Uh, hey, the parking situation and traffic and all, all, all the whole nine yards. Um. As council member, you would have, uh, large discretion over, uh, local infrastructure projects, uh, such as bike lanes, um, such as parking minimums, uh, in, in new developments and things of that nature. Uh, how do you look at the future of transportation in New York City? Uh, whether it be, um, the bus redesign that I'm sure you're, uh, well aware of, or uh, increasing or, or stopping the spread of bike lanes. Um. So I will start, um, I believe Wei, you're first, or?
Yes. There's a lot of, um, noises about, you know, the bus redesign plan. So I figured that we need more information from DOT. So if my community is against for bus redesigning plan, so I'm not going to favorite on it. Talking about bike lane, um, in this particular district, we don't have, only Sunset Park, we have, you know, some bike lane. But down on Bassamherd, I did not see it. But again, this has to be, go back to the community, we need community concern, we need to have community agree on all those, you know, infrastructure changes. Thank you.
Great. Um, you're free to rebut, or Stanley, I know you're looking to jump in, but you are.
I, I just wanna say I'm good.
Okay, well, you're up to answer the question, so.
Okay, transportation infrastructure. I can talk about it from a couple aspect, and the one thing I'm gonna talk about it is with schools. And the one thing I'm gonna tell you, when, when I was a parent and listening to other, other parent, the transportation infrastructure in our area was terrible. There was no way we can get to the schools on time and get to the schools anyplace. And this is why we have severe overcrowding in some of our schools and in the high schools especially. We only have five high schools in District Twenty, and there's no place for the kids to go. Because like for myself, my kids left the district, it would take an hour, hour and a half to go to a school, like say Midwood or Merwell. So the type, the transportation infrastructure is not there for schools or for anything else. Now, there was a project in Sunset Park with Eighth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, where they tried to like change it to one direction, one going east to west, the other one going west to east. And that was voted down because they were gonna take away a whole bunch of parking space, and the community did not want it. Okay, so yes, I would probably have to agree with others that says we need to look at it on a case-by-case basis and still what's needed. Um, we've seen what's happening right now with the biking, and there've been accidents all over the place because people are not used to it. And a lot of time, these bikers themselves are not toeing the line when it comes to traffic safety. The last thing I wanna mention, and I promise, uh, the senior citizens in my area have been complaining about the e-bikes because they're up on the sidewalks, they're not staying in the streets. So I just wanna bring up that part, okay? Thank you, everybody.
Uh, great. And if, uh, the other two candidates would like to address anything that Stanley just said, uh, you are free to do so.
I definitely agree with Stanley said, we need to address the issue about e-bikes. Um, I personally experienced, um, I walk my kids to school, and then just the bike just run from the sidewalks super fast, and it almost hit my kids. I think we definitely need the regulation for that. Um, those e-bikes cannot ride on the sidewalks.
She went to my name, can I say something? I did, I just wanna say with the e-bikes, we had even had people that been hit and died. So we really should look into this one day. Thank you. That's all I wanna say.
Great. Uh, and since you, since, uh, I believe all of you mentioned, uh, e, e-bikes, I will ask, uh, very specifically. Uh, you, you know, you, you're saying that we need to address them. Uh, would you move to outlaw them? What, what would be your plan of attack there? Um, and we will start, uh, Wei, I believe you are up.
So, um. Definitely, we have to, you know, take it the driver, we have to impose a heavy fine on that. So this is not acceptable if e-bike is on the pedestrian way. So it's going to be, it's very dangerous, so this is not okay. So I believe we have to enforce more heavy fine on it and just crack down all those, you know, uh, illegal, you know? So that, that we have to, you know, um, collaborate with, you know, the local precinct.
Great. Um, and since this was a follow-up question, then don't have to make your answers too long, but I will move over to you, Stanley.
Thank you. I've been all over the district talking with many seniors, citizens. And I was very surprised after public safety, e-bikes was the second issue they wanted to talk about. And it was very surprising. Apparently, many of the seniors of my area are really afraid of e-bikes, they either been hit or they've been chased down or the noise bothered them. And after public safety, this was the number two issue, and I was very surprised to hear about it. Now, in terms of regulation, you got a big problem with e-bikes. Nobody, there's no license for e-bikes. There's also no insurance for e-bikes. So even the cop was to, to catch them, wait, what kind of ticket can you give them? They don't carry any ID sometime. And then you also have a whole crew of people who are using these e-bikes for food delivery or using it for their livelihood. And I've even seen parents, you know, riding with their kids on these e-bikes. Sometimes it's like two or three kids on one bike. We need a change. Okay, and I believe there was cer- certain bills that's up in the city council. Um, I don't know which one to say right now, right here, right now, that I would support, but yes, we have to change. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Um, and Susan, if you wanna touch on my phone, about e-bikes?
Yeah, I, let's talk, let me talk about e-bikes first, and then I will talk about the, uh, transportation infrastructure. E-bikes in our neighborhoods, um, before pandemic, I don't see a lot. Right now, just recent years, this year, I see a lot. I'm a mother of two young children, and I go to public school, we have to walk to school every day. This is a concern as a mother, and also I speak to a lot of seniors in senior centers, they do concern about that. They cannot move as fast as the young people, and also the e-bikes never stop because they are seeing a senior citizen. We definitely need to have regulation. If we don't have regulation, we need to make one. How the, how the e-bikes to be licensed, how they be trained to ride those e-bikes, how they, um, what's the regulation they have to follow? We definitely need to introduce a bill in New York City. It's not only just to protect the pedestrian, it's not only just to protect the people, um, drive the car, it's also protect the people ride the e-bikes. And also the battery is the issue, how we safely charge these e-bikes. And we have been seeing maybe two, three fire caused by the e, e-bike battery charging in our community. It's, it's very sad. We have to make sure everyone is safe in the community. And a lot of the time I see my friends' door, their apartment doors, I do not charge your bike here. It's safety concern.
Uh, Stanley, you can respond, and then Susan, we will get back to you for, uh, general transportation.
I just wanted to say, the only reason why we're seeing the e-bikes, more e-bikes since the pandemic is because the last mayor okayed it. And that's why we've been seeing more and more than since the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, Susan, now, if you wanna touch on, uh, general philosophy about, uh, transportation um, and how you view, uh, the future of moving around in New York City.
Um, for transportation, a lot of time we, a lot of time, I have a friend, she has four kids go to, um, two go to middle school, two go to high school, she has to drive them everywhere, every day. I said, you are crazy, why not just ask them to take the public transportation? And she, her response is, it's not safe for my kids, I will be worried if they be, get attacked in subway station. That's a lot of concern in the subway system. And a lot of people just feel like it's not safe to take subway anymore. The first in the public transportation system, we want to make sure people are safe. And then we need to increase the number of police in different stations, help people to watch out what's going on there. And also, um, make sure people feel safe when they take the subway. And also, the second thing, we have to make sure our street is clean, our subway is clean. A lot of time, people just feel it's so dirty, I don't wanna take it, I dress such nice, I don't wanna take the subway. That's wrong. We definitely need to make sure our subway is clean and also the station is clean. In the morning, I give out pamphlets in the subway station. By the end of the, I finish, I will go to the station, pick up all the garbage on the, on the subway station. We definitely need increase the number of people cleaning the subway station, and also in the other public space. Also increase the number of, um, maybe, um, sanitation workers pick up the garbage more often, and then reduce the garbage on the street. And also, well, I already heard they want to cut the, um, MTA line, certain lines in the district. This is not acceptable. We need to fix the issue before we cut the line. Cutting the line, reduce the cost for MTA, that's not the solution. We need to fix the problem and also make sure people ride on those, uh, subways and feel safe.
Uh, great. Um, would anyone like to respond to that? We are heading towards the end here, but I will let anyone. Uh, okay. Um, so another kind of general question, and this might end up being our last one, uh, Jada, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but um, we are now approaching the halfway mark of Eric Adams' first term in office. Um, what, what, what grade would you give him, uh, if this, if you were the teacher grading his performance? Um, and more generally, what are, what are the big things that are going right, and what are the big things that are going wrong in the city? Um, and Jada, you know who's next? I'm losing track. Um.
I believe it's Stanley.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, okay, yeah, Stanley, that's fine.
I would probably say I will give him a B plus, A minus. And, um, he's pretty, he's doing a pretty decent job, he's trying. There, there were things I would say, like, when he first came in, he tried to do, make changes with the bail before, and the people in Albany said no to him, but at least he tried. It wasn't until Hoco took over, but, you know, at least he tried. The other, the other thing I would fault him on, I'm not doing a, a good enough job, is with the, uh, asylum seekers or what people call the migrants, because they're coming in, and we were just not prepared. And the thing is that hopefully, he should have been more prepared, looking back in hindsight. So this is probably the one area of what Fortamont, to have these people coming over, coming through thousands of miles over, you know, over the borders and coming up into New York. We need to be compassionate, and the thing is that these people, the best they can do is like offer them a gym. And that's not compassionate, okay? And I really wish he had a better answer than to put them into gyms or to put them into warehouses. So that's probably the one area where I would fault him on, more than anything else. Um, while we're talking about this, I just wanna say, like, you know, I, I like what he's doing on, in other areas, okay? And there was pushback on where things are going. However, the cuts that he's doing now to like public safety, you know, he cut five hundred of the school guards' jobs. There's gonna be a problem come, come September where schools don't have, they, you know, school guards around. And there are other cuts coming up because money has to be paid in this area. So, and I think my time is up. Thank you.
Um, uh, all right, we will move on. Uh, Susan, I believe you are next up in our rotation. Um, you can question you.
I think, uh, Eric Adam, I mean, generally, uh, he is doing much better than previous mayor. Um, at least what I have been seeing. And also, he increased the funding for police department, even a lot of people against his decision, but he still did that. Um, I think he is trying his best to do everything possible for public safety. And for the minor part, I, my best part I did not like is cut the funding for education. The, uh, the, like, say, the class original has thirty-five peop- thirty, thirty-five kids in the class, because they are thirty-two kids, we're gonna hire less teachers? That's impossible. We still hire same teachers, uh, use same classroom, paying same utilities, paying same rent, why you cut the education budget because there's less students in the system? That's not gonna change the cost of all the school, the fact, the fact gonna ha- have is, let's say, my daughter's school, they cut the program, they cut the violin program, because they don't have money. So we definitely make sure we have enough funding for education. That's part I, I don't think should be cut.
Um, great. Um, so we are going to go to Wei, and then, uh, we will move on to closing statements. I know I'm a little over time, but, uh, I couldn't help myself.
Laura. I think Eric Adam does a fair job. I'll grade him like B. Two aspects I not favorite of it is one is the migrants. Aspect, you know, migrants should never been placed in our children's school period. That's one thing that I dislike. The other thing is about, um, the budget for twenty twenty-four. Seems like he's gonna cut, cutting essential services, which is a mistake. Like cutting Q and E library and social services, I'm a social service provider. And I'm, I have two senior centers to taking, uh, taking care of. He proposed to cut twelve millions in meal services for senior, it's not acceptable. Many of the senior who rely on these programs are homebound or living with disability. And also cutting Q and E forty-one millions annually would cause to have laying off faculty. You know, Q, uh, Q and E educates half of our public school teachers and half of our New York City nurses. We must invest in the next generations in educations. So this is two areas I not favorite of it. Thank you.
Um, okay, so like I said, we are a little over time, apologize for that, so we are going to move on to closing statements. Um, and we will definitely hold you to your time on this one. Um, I believe Susan is starting off this round.
Um, thank you again, one, thank you once again to everyone who organized and participates in today's debate. And a special thank you, uh, to those who came out and hear about the pressing issues that we face in South Timbuktu. I ask you, you, I ask for your vote because I believe I'm the best person to represent the very serious needs that we all face here. No one will fight harder than me to make our streets safer and cleaner. No one will work harder to secure truly affordable housing units and help homeowners in our community. As a mother and raise two kids in our community, I will fight to get fully funded the education programs, after-school programs, and the three K programs. I am the only one who live in our district. I have lived and worked in our neighborhood by working with Assemblyman Cotton and I see five thousand families came to our office every year. I know the issues that matter to the, to those families. I know the steps I need to take, assure the voice of the people in our community are represented. Please vote for me, Susan Zhuang, for city council. Thank you.
Um, great. And as a reminder, uh, this will be, uh, recording will be on YouTube and on brooklynpaper.com and our various other Snap Media sites. As a reminder to all of you. Um, and next up for closing statements, uh, Wei, I believe you're up.
So thank you, Jada and Aiden, it's that media city for having me tonight. I love this community. I have loved serving and helping those in it since I was twenty years old. To reiterate, I want to invest in our public school, protect the S H S A T and expand after school program and summer programs. I want to support our police and get illegal guns out of the streets. I wanted to expand senior programming and housing. And I want to make sure South and Brooklyn is affordable and home for opportunity for all. So my campaign is about the future of this district, a new district that full of opportunities. Especially after pandemic, there's so much that needs to be done. We need to restore, rebuild and reconnect with each other. I'm the best candidate to un- unite South and Brooklyn as I have been working with different community-based organizations and different age group of people. I know the need of our community and I believe when we work together, everything is possible. I have endorsed by our first responders, firefighters, teachers, labor unions, almost all South and Brooklyn elected officials and over fifty community leaders. All because they know I am able to best serve this community and get things accomplished. More than anything, I hope to earn the votes from the community members on June twenty-seven. Thank you.
Um, great. And we will include uh links to uh all of your websites uh in the descriptions of this recording.
Can I speak?
Uh, yep, Stanley, you.
Okay, okay. Thank you for having me at this candidate forum. I am running in this race to represent you, the resident of District Forty-three. My only concern is what you, resident in, in the district want. I am the only one of the three who have lived in the Besenhurst Dyke area for more than thirty years. I lived in Dyke Heights for twenty-six years and my three kids attended K to eight and District Twenty schools. I have talked with the resident in this area. They have three main issue. Public safety, strong education and affordability. And I will fight for those concerned and not for those of the political establishment and the political party that my two opponent represent. I am not beholden to the politician or the political machine. I serve the community. I promise that everybody in the community that currently are voiceless and not involved with these political clubs will have a seat at the table when I win. The one thing I want to mention about education, I've been fighting for the S H S A T since two thousand and seven. Feel free to do a search on that. Don't let anybody else take my credit. I humbly ask you for your vote starting June seventeenth. I vote for the community and not the establishment. Thank you.
Uh, great, awesome. Uh, so again, this has been a candidate forum for the Democratic primary for Council District Forty-three. Uh, the election for the primary is on June twenty-seventh and early voting starts about ten days before that. Uh, we want to thank the candidates for being here and I want to thank Jada for uh agreeing to do this with me. Um, thank you again and uh best of luck to you all.